Call this meeting to order. I'd ask that Mr. Sullivan come down and offer our invocation. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Byrne. Please stand.
Could you bow with me, please? Gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and the occasion of this council meeting, Father, and we ask that your protection be upon those of us in this state tonight, Father, and we're experiencing weather, and we ask that you would be at those who are responding to any emergency situation, give them protection as well. Father, we ask your wisdom be upon this council tonight and the decisions they have before them. Thank you for this great city, this great state, and this great nation. We give you all the glory and the honor for that, and the men and women who protect it. We ask all these favors in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go around the horseshoe with community-related announcements. Ms. Eads?
Someone is wanting to speak on this issue, but again, we have the Stars in Stripes Celebration coming up on, let's see, sorry, Saturday and Sunday. And so, please make plans to attend that. I understand the Blue Angels are gonna be with us for the first time in the last ten years, so it's gonna be really exciting, and we're looking forward to that. I also wanted to make mention that Dingers for Darren is being put on by the Fire Department, and my understanding from Doug was it's starting at 9:00 AM, is that right, Chief? Okay. So softball game, lots of our first responders are gonna be playing each other, and all the proceeds are gonna benefit firefighter in need, so I ask that you come out and attend that if you can, please. And then the Tinker Intertribal Powwow is coming up on Saturday, June 8th, at 1:00 according to the information that I have, and so if you'd mark your calendars to attend that, I think that's gonna be a great occasion. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, just wanted to remind everyone that June 7th is our Family Friday. That's the first Friday of the month, and we have a concert and movie down at Charles J. Johnson Park. June 11th will be the ONG Franchise Agreement Vote. That'll be for a franchise agreement for 25 years with ONG, and apparently absentee ballots are currently going out. June 14th will be the Mommy-Sun Luau at Regional Swim and Slide. June 12th through the 15th will be the Buick Club Event over in the Hospitality District. July 4th Tribute to Liberty in Regional Park. And also on July 4th, we obviously will be celebrating our country's history, and we will not be providing sanitation service. That service will be provided on Wednesday, July 3rd, the day before. And just to remind everyone, if you didn't have your sanitation service on Memorial Day, on Monday, that service, both sanitation and recycling, will take place tomorrow. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I do, Mayor. We have the Association Celebration coming up on Thursday, June 13th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Joby Barnes Regional Park, at the Park Pavilion. If you need more information about that, you can call Neighborhood Initiative Office at 405-739-1005. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Okay, we've got several presentations tonight. First presentation will be Mr. Sullivan and Public Works. If you guys wanna come down front.
Okay, so my name is Brandon Huxford from the American Public Works Association. I'm the current sitting Secretary and Awards Chair, and so a kinda running joke here is, I feel like I've been to Midwest, the City of Midwest City several times to present you all with awards, and so this is really just further testament to the great things that y'all are doing here. And so, on behalf of them, we want to award Mr. Sullivan here with the Top 10 Public Works Leaders of the Year Award. Just to give you a little snapshot of what that is, and then I'll give a brief bio, which is not gonna be a true testament to your career nor your legacy that you're gonna leave. But in general, the Top 10 Public Works Leader of the Year is for, it was developed to inspire excellence and dedication in public service by recognizing the outstanding career achievements in individual public works professionals and officials from both the public and private sectors. Primary focus of this award is on career service to public works as well as various other deeds independent of one individual event. So this year's recipient was unanimous, and goes to Mr. Von Sullivan. I'm gonna give a brief bio, real quick. So Mr. Sullivan first started his involvement with the City of Midwest City through service on the city council. He then resigned after eight years of service to begin working full-time for the city. The city manager at that time approached him after witnessing his leadership qualities and asked him to serve as community service director, which at that time was responsible for streets, parks, drainage, and golf carts. As time progressed, the new visitor center, welcome center, and convention bureau were also added under his supervision. In 2017, the retirement of the Environmental Services Director allowed the city to combine that department with community services and form its previous public works department, in which Mr. Sullivan was then promoted to Director. On behalf of everybody in Public Works, I appreciate your service and your commitment to excellence. Appreciate it.
Public Works Director, you're not supposed to say that. We've got weather in the area. Ms. Eads, you wanna come down here with me? This next one is hard to do.
This is also a pledge of Bobby and Jean Holland. Bobby and Jean have been a part of our community career, and I've known them for thirty-plus years. And there is no two people in the city that advocate for this city more than these two. Every time we've ever needed them on a boat, issue, or just being by our side, they were there. One of the most, biggest testaments to their dedication to the city was when we lost one of our police officers, Jean, over this encounter. And they've gotten more over their front yard dedicated to the city. Just can't get the price. But they have decided to, and Bobby's been the neighborhood watcher, president of Atkinson Heights for, since 1995, right? Since we started it? Ninety-nine. And obviously, that's an unpaid position, and they're there every time we ever been and out there supporting our employees, police, and fire, and the city at all. There's not a thing that we can do to repay them for their service to our community. And I would turn it over to Ms. Eads, who's the board one councilperson.
So Bobby, on behalf of myself, and my family, and the members of our Neighborhood Association, I want to present to you this bouquet of flowers as a tribute to you for everything that you have done for myself, my family, and our Neighborhood Association. When I moved to Midwest City and became involved with Neighborhood Association, Bobby became like a surrogate mother to me, as she is to everyone. If you cannot have a conversation with a concerned mother about the neighborhood, about the things that's happened in this city, about our local department, fire department, emergency board, then Bobby's the first person to step up and say a favorable word, or how can I help, or what can I do, or get you insight into who you need to talk to. She probably does find her own reason why I sit in a four-line council and receive courage and support and desire to see the neighborhood through. And so I thank both of them for all their service and service. And if you can't ever have calls, I should call, and she does, and she loves you, and she reminds you every night to make sure that you can lay your blood, sit around, and make it a very long time you can see that. So I want to thank you, and because I do, it's this bouquet, and I'm sure it was the mayor of the neighborhood's proclamation.
Normally I give you the keys to the city, they have given me the keys to the city yet. Mr. Henson, what's up with that? We can't give you a lot, but we can give you a debt. So whereas, May 1999, Bobby and Jean Holland helped establish the Atkinson Heights Neighborhood Association and continued faithfully and wisely lead the association through September of 2018. Whereas over the years, numerous changes and community improvements have happened as they've advocated on behalf of the neighborhood, and their tireless service resulted in one of the safest and most desirable neighborhoods in our community. Whereas Bobby and Jean have always been supporting comments with growth, health, and safety improvement initiatives for Midwest City, such as promoting the Street Improvement Bond Project, for which they were featured, and educational programs. So therefore, on that news, Mayor of Midwest City, I hereby proclaim... May 28th, 2019, is Bobby and Jean Holland Day in the City of Midwest City, and do hereby urge all citizens to show your appreciation to Bobby and Jean Holland for their dedicated, heartfelt service to our community. First of all, thanks to you, Mr. Mayor, for what you've said and what you've done for this city since you've been here. For Mr. Henson, thank you. We owe you a lot. Brandon, you are the greatest. We've always said it, I'll say it again, that we'll put Midwest City's Police Department up against any department in this nation, and you know we wear our shirts of pride across this country, and you, David, are right there beside him. And we thank all of you officers. You're all our kids. You're one of us. I don't know what else to say other than we're so thankful we have you and for what you do in our fire department. And Mike Stroh, for his leadership in our Neighborhood Association, if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't be here. He's one of the best. We've had Matt. We've had so many to be our lieutenants, and so many officers. Jalen, you wanna come down, buddy? Like I say, you're all our children. This is your city, and we love this city. It's our city, and has been for sixty years. Every once in a while, we have outstanding students... Thank you to all of you for all you've done for us. Come on, Jean.
Come on.
Oh, come on.
All I gotta say is, go Midwest City.
That sets themselves apart from the rest of the school, and Jalen's one of them.
If you don't like it, move.
He's obviously musically talented. How long you been playing?
Six years.
Six years? Wow. Six years, and how old are you?
Eight. Or sixteen.
You're sixteen. That's okay. But been playing that long, and well, you've just gotta listen to this. Whereas, Mr. Jalen Vincent, a violinist from Midwest City High School, has been chosen to attend an intensive summer program at Carnegie Hall as one of seventy-nine... As one of seventy-nine talented young musicians ages fourteen to seventeen from the US and Puerto Rico. Whereas Assistant Band Director at Midwest City High School, Mark Insley, commented, Jalen Vincent, for selling his excellence as a high school student, he holds high standards for his academic career as well as endeavors in fine arts. He not only holds a high standard for himself, but for others around him in the organization. He leads by example and is an encourager to those around him. Jalen is a talented musician that excels at playing trumpet in the jazz band, as well as violin in orchestra. He's an epitome of a student musician. So therefore, since Jalen is such an exemplary student and represents the finest Midwest City has to offer, it is an honor for us and the City of Midwest City to hereby proclaim May 29th, 2019, as Jalen Vincent Day, and I urge all citizens to congratulate him for his accomplishments and the young man that he has turned out to be and what he's gonna do. And you're a violinist, not a pillow player.
I can be both.
Okay, so before we let Jalen go, I nominated Jalen for this mayoral proclamation, and I appreciate Matt's gracious, energetic acceptance to do this. I've known Jalen for about five years now. He is an excellent musician. He is an excellent student. Mr. Hensley, who gave us the comment for his proclamation, is standing at the back of the room, and we could go on and on about Jalen's accomplishment. He's gonna be our junior class president next year. He's in NHS, he's in key club. He gives of his time. You'll see him on social media, playing at all the closing ceremonies at different schools, and sharing his great musical talent with our community, and we're so thankful for him, and we're thankful for his folks. His mom is here with us tonight. They are constant supporters of student activities, and we're so grateful, and I'm glad to count Jalen and his family as friends of ours, and I thank you all so much, and I congratulate you.
You're quite the star tonight there, Von, and Paul Streets. This is another one that, you know, Public Works is an unseen hero in our daily-day lives.
I am, brother. Can I get an amen?
Amen, brother.
Okay, okay. You give a politician a microphone and no time limit, you're in trouble. But they truly are. I mean, when you turn on the water, you get clean water. When you flush the toilet, the bad stuff goes away. Your streets, sanitation, all that wraps into Public Works. Cops and firemen get all the accolades. These guys just keep on going, day in and day out, doing what they've been asked to do, and they deserve to be recognized. So, in our small part of doing so, whereas, May twenty, or 19th through the 25th, 2019, is National Public Works Week, and the theme is "It Starts Here," and that's no kidding, which honors the public works professionals who focus on infrastructure, facilities, services. They're vital to the importance to sustainable and resilient communities, to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of our community. Whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services cannot be, could not be provided without dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas, it is a public interest for all citizens to gain knowledge of and to maintain progressive interest in understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. To learn more, visit MidwestCityOK.org, 234-PUBLIC-WORKS-dash-whatever. Okay. Sometimes these suckers get long. Whereas, the year 2019 marks the fifty-ninth year of Annual Public Works Week, and so therefore, let it be known, I resolve, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim the week of, May 19th through the 25th, as Public Works Appreciation Week. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that precludes our awards ceremony for this evening. We'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agendas so that the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council or members of the audience, which discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We move into discussion items. Discussion item number one.
Says, "Discussion: Consideration of awarding the bid to and entering into a contract with Holland Backhoe, Inc., in the amount of $245,031 for the Rohan and Hand Water Line Extension Project." Mayor, Council, this typically would be just a consent agenda item, but we knew that there was a lot of interest in the execution of this project, so we do have an award that we're recommending. We also have contacted those property owners in this area that signed up to connect to the, to the water service when it became available, so those people have been informed of the pending award of the contract. Staff recommends approval.
Excellent. Any discussion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Next item?
This is PC 1990, Discussion: Consideration of Approval of the Proposed Preliminary Plot of Cassidy Cove, Section Three, Described as a Part of the Northwest Quarter of Section One Township 11 North, Range Two West, Located at 500 and 600 Davidson Road. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. Henson. This item is a request to subdivide a single parcel into twenty-five individual parcels for single-family development. Access to the subdivision will be via Davidson Road. The applicant is proposing water and sewer line extensions to serve all the lots. The area of request is currently zoned R6, single-family detached residential. The applicant has requested a waiver to the prohibition of lots backing onto the local street, as two lots and a small portion of another lot back onto Davidson Road. If you remember, this item has been continued a couple of times over the last couple of meetings, and I'd like to thank Jim Campbell and John Doyle for allowing us to move forward with investigating the concerns that we had over the drainage in the area. Also like to thank the Mayor and Councilman Byrne for attending meetings this afternoon and also being very involved in this drainage situation. The applicant's, the applicant has allowed staff and the consulting engineers for the city to tweak the design a little bit and ensure that the, that the subdivision as it's proposed will not cause a further impact on downstream issues, or cause downstream issues. That's not to say, and it's clear in the report, that with or without this development, the drainage improvements that are downstream will be overwhelmed at any given time, as we've seen over the last couple of weeks. But if we go forward with this, and staff planning commission and staff recommend approval, if we go forward with this, I'd like to make note that a couple of variances need to be taken into consideration. One is the backing of the lots onto, onto the, onto the street. The other is, Section 5-15. If you recall, Mayor, we had a meeting a while back talking about L-garages and L-shaped garages and side-load garages, and in the staff report, it notes that the percentage of that still is supposed to take place, and I think the intent is to lessen that to 20%. So I'd make note of that. The other thing that I would like to note through all these conversations that we've had over the past couple of weeks, is that the improvement plans still have to be submitted and reviewed by staff and by the consulting engineer for the, for the city, and the, the changes that have taken place over the last couple of weeks make it in question as the dissipation of the water coming out of the detention facility. And we will, you know, like to make note that that's a requirement to lessen the impact on the property adjacent just to the south of the detention facility. So if we could, if we move forward with this as a motion, make those three requirements as part of it.
Is the applicant here? Mr. Campbell, could you give us your name and address and let us know if you're okay with those recommendations?
Jim Campbell, 9228 Cassidy Court, Midwest City.
that, that with or without this development, the drainage improvements that are downstream will be overwhelmed at any given time, as we've seen over the last couple of weeks. But if we go forward with this, and stat planning commission and staff recommend approval, if we go forward with this, I'd like to make note that a couple of variances need to be taken into consideration. One is the backing of the lots onto, onto the, onto the street. The other is Section 5-15. If you recall, mayor, we had a meeting a while back talking about L garages and L-shaped garages and side-load garages. And in the staff report, it notes that the percentage of that is still supposed to take place. And I think the intent is to lessen that to 20%. So, I'd make note of that. The other thing that I would like to note through all these conversations that we've had over the past couple of weeks, is that the improvement plans still have to be submitted and reviewed by staff and by the consulting engineer for the, for the city. And the, the changes that have taken place over the last couple of weeks make it in question as the dissipation of the water coming out of the detention facility. And we will, you know, like to make note that that's a requirement to lessen the impact on the property adjacent just to the south of the detention facility. So, if we could, if we move forward with this as a motion, make those three requirements as part of it.
Is the applicant here? Mr. Campbell, could you give us your name and address and let us know if you're okay with those recommendations?
Jim Campbell, 9228 Cassidy Court, Midwest City.
And yes, we've read it and we're good with it.
Thank you.
There's one other thing that we talked about too before you sit down, is the variance on the, on the backyards going on to the, onto Davidson. Are you intending to put up stockade fences back there?
There's a tree line that runs along that we would like to preserve to separate that from the street.
The one concern that we have is that if, if you're going to put up, if stockade fences are put up there and we give this variance, we'd like some assurances that there's a gate back there. Because what happens is, and we're seeing it with another development, is that the back, a fence gets put in and then there's grass or there's property behind it, that those people are actually responsible for cutting the grass and maintaining. It's not a city, it's not the city that takes care of it. And it makes it extremely difficult for them to take care of it when they can't get to it.
We're going to have an HOA to take care of the detention area. We're going to try to make it into a small park area. And plus, the entry, there may be parked and mowed, we'll have it, the street included to mow it at the same time.
I'm glad you bring up the HOA because as, as you probably are aware, there's a city ordinance that requires that the HOA paperwork go through the city attorney's office for review. And we want to emphasize, we, we're going to, we're going to be really strict on that because we want to make sure that five or 10 years down the road, there is the HOAs working because we don't want to have to go back in and deal with problems with the detention part. Because we have been in other developments. I've been pretty vocal about the water over there. We had a meeting today, Billy, Patrick, city manager Tim Lyons, Paul Streets, Von Sullivan, myself and the mayor. The engineer that the city hired has done a lot of work to review the plans. I had, I had several questions that I felt like needed for me to vote positive for this. They've all been answered in an affirmative way. Just like he mentioned, this isn't the final thing. It's got to come back to them and our engineering staff, the people that we've hired to make sure. Because the, the big thing that we're worried about is the water leaving that property downstream. And there's some things that we're going to, the city's going to end up having to do. We talked about a drainage master plan. There's some things that we're going to be working on in the future. But this is one of the significant things. We've got to make sure that the water that leaves that property, when it does, doesn't adversely affect the people downstream. And from what the engineer's saying, if it's done the way he's proposing it, that Mr. Campbell has agreed to, he believes that it'll be handled properly. Is that...
Yes, I think that accurately sums up what the engineers are saying. So, we had three different engineers looking at it, so.
I, I'd just like to know, what caused you to H, uh, HOA homeowners assistance play and play into this part? Because the, because the developers of this particular area, and did they have a HLM, uh, HOA from the beginning or they just, that was just recently?
Counselperson Allen, what, they will create a homeowners association. It will become a legal instrument, a legal organization. They will be responsible for maintaining certain portions, common areas of the, of the subdivision. And so, if those are appropriately maintained over the years, there won't be any problems with the detention pond or there won't be any problems in mowing areas.
I understand. I'm just asking a question that from the beginning, there was no HOA from the beginning?
No, there, there have been. We have not, under previous attorneys, they did not want the city to, to review the, the organization, the HOA organizations. And that, that has changed as a result of our last comprehensive plan update.
Because I was just wondering, should they bear the responsibility because of them having the, the development?
That's how an HOA works. They take over once the developer is, what's 80% complete. You sold 80% of your houses, then the homeowners association takes over and they, they fill in with a developer to fix all that stuff. That's what you do is go to pay for it. So, that's what an HOA is for. It comes in after the developer's done.
Right. But I was saying, after the developers, the developers may be, the issue came from how the developers, uh...
Then the HOA can go back on the developer, right?
That's why I was wondering why we was having to pay for the engineers or something. What did you have to pay for?
Well, we, we did, we did pay for some outside consultants to, to put a second set eyes on their proposed drainage plans.
Well, so I guess now an HOA would have to be responsible, correct?
For the, for the development within this, this particular subdivision that will be common areas. Yes, ma'am?
So, I, Jim builds a quality home. I think this is a great thing. I'm going to explain my vote. I hate variances. I have a history of never voting for them. I'm only going to vote no on this because I don't like a variance. But I think this is a good plan. I know those two things probably don't seem to go hand in hand, but I hate variances and I think they're always a bad idea.
Any further discussion?
Move to approve. Sorry. Councilman Reed is giving me some direction. Would you prefer to do that?
No.
Move to approve based upon all of the information provided to us by Billy and the conditions A4 discussed?
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
I'd say I'm with Mr. Reed, but I'm glad that he's being resolved, but I just...
So, did you vote yea or nay?
Yea.
And the mayor votes yes. With that being said, the motion carries. Mr. Campbell, thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Next item?
PC 1992, discussion consideration of approval of the proposed preliminary plat of Roller Lot, described as a part of the northwest quarter of Section 36 Township 12 North, Range 2 West, addressed as 9401 East Cardinal Place. Mr. Harless?
Thank you, Mr. Henson. This item is a request to subdivide a single parcel into two individual parcels. No development is proposed. There is a house on the southwest corner of the lot. The property owner is applying for this plat in order to sell proposed Lot 1 to people who are currently living in the existing residence. The one-acre lot exceeds the minimum lot size in R6 zoning district. Public water and sanitary sewers, sanitary sewer service are not available to this area, the proposed Lot 1. The applicant is requesting a waiver to the requirement of half-street improvements and sidewalk improvements and water and well, uh, extensions for proposed Lot 1. Staff recommends approval of Roller Lot preliminary plat. The reason we're requesting the waiver is this is an existing house and it'd be pretty expensive to extend the water to this area. Be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, I do. Billy, there's a strip right behind the house. Is that owned or is it leased by the, uh, the oil company that has that oil well back there?
Yes, that, the whole area is owned by that. And then we've requested per our trails plan, a strip through that area. So, it's someday a trail, or I guess when a trail comes through there someday, that we'll have that area for that.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions, Mr. Harless? Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yea.
We've got one nay. Motion carries. Next item?
This is PC 1993, public hearing with discussion consideration of an ordinance to redistrict from C3 Community Commercial to SPUD, simplified plan unit development governed by the C4 General Commercial District, and a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from OR Office Retail to COMM Commercial for the property addressed as 5712 East Reno Avenue. Mr. Harless?
Thank you. This SPOD is being requested in order to, for the applicant to move his existing car sales business from a lot on the southeast corner of Sona Road and East Reno to the area of request. The lot is currently vacant. If approved, the applicant pans to build one commercial structure with connections to city water and sanitary sewer service. The applicant needs a larger lot to accommodate his sale stock. The SPOD is to be governed by C4 General Commercial District. According to the SPOD document, the applicant is requesting to allow all C3 community commercial uses. The only C4 use in this area would be for automobile sales and rentals light. The site plan shows one proposed building and one access point onto East Reno. Planning commission and staff recommend approval.
What kind of regulations or building regulations is that building going to fall under?
All of our, all of our current codes. I'm not sure I understand.
What's it going to look like?
Uh, the, the brick in, in the front will be the 80% masonry. There will, it'll have the articulation if it meets the, the sizes and everything is required.
I was going to inquire if the applicant or designee on the applicant's behalf was in the audience. There we go.
Hi.
Hi. State your name and address.
My name is Omar Kati. My address is 5336 Cobble Street, Oklahoma City.
And sir, you are the owner of 733 Cars, correct?
Correct.
And you would come to us with some issues with your current location. So, this is your plan to build the new location. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
What's, uh, what's your plans?
My plans is just to build a 30 by 40 building and develop the baking lot, the car sales lot, and move my lot from the corner of Sona and Reno to that address.
Are you going to be working on and repairing cars there too?
No, sir. Sales.
Sales only?
Car sales, yes.
Okay.
So, when you build a fence that fronts Reno, then if you get a lot of cars, you're not going to do what has happened off of your other car lot and park them outside?
I learned a lot from the code enforcement, what I can, I can't do.
So, I'm assuming that is a, no, you will not park the cars illegally, correct?
No, sir. I park the cars according to the city ordinance.
That's what we like to hear.
Yes, sir. I learned a lot.
Sometimes it's a learning curve like this, right?
Yes.
All right. That being said, chair to entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thanks for being here and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next discussion item?
This is PC 1994, discussion consideration of approval of the proposed preliminary plat of Tuscany Ridge, Section 2, described as a part of the northwest quarter of Section 9 Township 11 North, Range 1 West of the Indian Meridian Midwest City, Oklahoma. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. You may be familiar with this if you remember from the, what they went through and adjusted the SPOD to allow for this to happen into the subdivision. This item is to request a subdivided Lot 10 of the original Tuscany Ridge subdivision and extend the subdivision by adding two new lots, as well as an extension of Tuscany Ridge Road, Tuscany Ridge Road to provide access to the new lots. A public water extension, private street extension, biohydrants are requirements of this plat. The applicant is requesting a waiver to requirements for sidewalk and sanitary sewer improvements. Sanitary sewer service is not currently available to the existing lots in Tuscany Ridge and there's no sidewalks in the area due to the size of the lots of the existing area. Staff recommends approval of Tuscany Ridge Section 2 preliminary plat, as does the planning commission. Glad to answer any questions.
And this is just simply a lot split up there, right?
Um, and it'll have a road extension and some, 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 uh, water extensions as well.
And they'll be paid for by the developer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions? Chair to entertain a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item?
This is PC 1995, public hearing with discussion consideration of an ordinance to redistrict from R6 Single Family Detached Residential to O2 General Office for the property described as a part of Lot 1 of Block 2 of the Friendly Acres Edition, addressed as 11126 East Reno Avenue. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. At the May 7th planning commission meeting, staff and the planning commission were made aware of some drainage issues out on that area to the property, immediately to the south or adjacent to, to, to the south. It was more about the water coming across the southern property from, I guess it would be north to south, along his property line. And he was concerned that any additional development of there, he just didn't want any more impact from that development onto his property. And so, we, since all the drainage issues that we've had in the past and we didn't want to bring that before council with a lot of issues unanswered, we tasked the consulting engineer and the applicant to solve those issues with the surrounding property owner and, and we'd bring that back, table it, bring it back to the, to the planning commission early next month. You'll see it, if it gets tabled at this meeting, you'll see it at the June 11th meeting. If we, if it passes at that point, they can still meet their June 15th closing date on their property. So, at that point, they have met with staff and have met with the surrounding property owner to, to resolve some of those issues. It will not correct the issue. The goal is to reduce the amount of drainage that goes over to that property. Patrick, can you answer any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Merrill, we'd just like, just like to note that the consultant and the developers have been very accommodating. They've already resubmitted a full set of plans that do include all of their drainage improvements that they're proposing. We're also working with the adjacent property owner to, to try to help alleviate some of the issues. This development won't directly impact the gentleman that came to planning commission, but there is some issues at a street crossing that we're looking at and we're trying to work with some of the, the residents out there to see if we can address those situations. So, I just wanted to note that they, they are working to, to answer all the questions staff's asking them.
Okay. So, it's, uh, it's staff's recommendation that we table this and you'll bring it back later date, correct?
Yes, sir, at the 11th, June 11th meeting.
You want to table till June 11th?
Yes, sir.
Table or no action? Do you have to bring it back just like this?
Table.
Table, good. This had to be advertised, so you don't want to have to go back and re, redo the advertisement.
So, the chair to entertain a motion to table?
Motion to a table.
A second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
This is discussion consideration to approve an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 28, offenses, Section 28-130, possession of dangerous drugs, Section 28-131, possession and sale of certain toxins and other drugs prohibited, and Section 28-132, possession or sale of drug-related paraphernalia, and providing for repealer and severability. The city attorney?
This is to bring our ordinances into compliance with state statutes. These drugs used to be, possession used to be a felony. Now, they're a misdemeanor which we could cite for. So, we're changing our ordinance in accordance with that.
So, just to be clear, and I'm doing this more for the public because I know your answer, we are in compliance now with the will of the voters because they voted on this through two or three years ago. So, regardless of what any of us think, all we are about this law, all we're doing is coming into compliance with what the voters voted for, right?
Both that and previously, we were not able to cite for possession of drugs that are now presently a misdemeanor, but we have not changed our ordinances to reflect that.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, we're hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agendas so trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience which discuss none, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we move into the new business public discussion of municipal authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
I now call to order the Midwest City Hospital Authority. We do have consent agenda, and again, these items are placed on consent agendas so the trustees can, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience which discuss an item, it can be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I've got a motion?
Second.
And I've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We do have one discussion item?
This is discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. No actions necessary on this this evening.
No actions required on this one. We move into new business public discussion. Does anybody have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I now call to order the Midwest City Economic Development Authority. We do have two discussion items.
First item are the minutes from the May 14, 2019 meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Next item?
Next item is discussion consideration of approving the management representation letter to Grant Thornton LLP and accepting the associated financial statements of Sooner Town Center LLC for the calendar year ending December 31, 2018. This is a requirement of the redevelopment agreement between the city and Sooner Town Center for an audit to be done every year, and the audit was performed by Grant Thornton with the representation letter and the financial statements attached. Staff would recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Do you still have our city attorney with the...
Okay, I have a motion. I've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We do move into the new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority?
Trek in northeast.
Hearing none, we do have an executive session.
This is discussion consideration of, one, entering into executive session as allowed under 25OS, Section 307(c)(11), to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to remain or to locate within the city; and, two, an open session authorizing the city manager to take action as appropriate based upon the discussion in executive session.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, one at a time. I've got a motion to go into executive session. I've got a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? We are now in executive session.